Let your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, if you would call the roll, please.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Westner.
Present.
Commissioner Adukas.
Here.
Commissioner McGee.
Here.
Please let the record show that Commissioner Anstott is not present. Going on to public comments, this is my favorite section over the last nineteen years. I noticed we don't have my theme music. I'll have to bring it back in for next year. For those of you who are new to dealing with me, that is the theme from Jeopardy when they have the final question. Seeing nobody in the audience, seeing no response, we will move on from public comments. Approval of the minutes of April 12, 2012. Commissioners?
Move for approval.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. Approval of May 24, 2012. Commissioners?
Move for approval.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The Chair is going to take out of order item eight since it has been dealt with, and if we could have Mr. Bock just give us an update on it.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Item eight involved a series of appeals filed by the operator of the Best Rock Mining Facility of various notices of violation and determinations made by the planning director. They withdrew those and entered into compliance agreement with the county essentially to do what the law requires them to do. So we're in the process of working with the operator right now to finalize their financial assurance and deal with the other violation issues on the site.
So the matter is completely withdrawn and we should not see?
They withdrew all their outstanding appeals, some of which had been around for quite a while. So we wouldn't enter into an agreement, we're going to have a hearing unless they withdrew all their appeals. So they've withdrawn all of those and now we're working on resolving the issues.
Any clarification from?
Are you optimistic that there will be resolve? Will we see these folks in here?
I believe there's hope.
Any further questions of the staff? Thank you, Mr. Bock. We certainly appreciate the input.
Okay.
All right, moving on to item number seven, and I apologize for my voice. I've got some kind of a near sore throat here. ZN 12-0002, county initiated text amendments to the coastal ordinance. Ms. Machet, is that how you pronounce it?
It's Machet.
Machet, okay. Try to get too French on you there.
Everyone does, it's not just you.
Oh, okay. Please, Katie.
All right. So I'm Katie Machet, I'm here to present a proposed amendment to our coastal zoning ordinance. A little bit of background about these proposed amendments and their purpose. We are updating the coastal zoning ordinance to ensure that our regulations are consistent with the Coastal Act and related standards in that document, to reflect some of the changes to law, to technology and procedures that have happened since 1987, which was the last time we had a major update to our coastal zoning ordinance. We're trying wherever possible to streamline our coastal permitting process and provide greater clarity to staff, customers, and decision-makers as they use our ordinance. Towards that end, we've proposed some changes that reorganize and simplify the language in the ordinance and generally increase its accuracy and consistency. We have worked very closely with coastal commission staff as we've developed this amendment. The purpose of this is to ensure that the amendment is consistent with the Coastal Act. The coastal commission staff obviously are the experts in that law, and hopefully to shorten the time to process this amendment with the coastal commission and ultimately create an amendment that can be adopted by the commission. We do have some future amendments planned in the next couple of years that will look at more substantive policy issues, things like coastal biology, landscape standards, and tree protection, and as part of those amendments, we'll do a more extensive public outreach program where we'll review proposed policies and programs as part of those future amendments and provide an overview of any amendments that may be adopted in the meantime. I want to talk a little bit about coastal regulations and the regulatory framework in the coastal zone so everyone understands the context of these amendments. Here's a map of our coastal zone. The dark blue is the coastal zone in the unincorporated county, and this amendment would affect all parcels in the unincorporated coastal zone. The Coastal Act is the main state law that regulates development in the coastal zone, and it identifies five key goals. Those are to maintain and enhance the quality of the coastal environment, to assure a balanced utilization of coastal resources, to maximize public access and recreation along the coast, to prioritize coastal-dependent development over other types of development, so that's developments that really depend on the water or the coastline to function, and to cooperate with local governments as we implement the Coastal Act. The Coastal Act does allow local jurisdictions to regulate coastal development through three documents: the land use plan, the local implementation plan, and the categorical exclusion order. And those documents implement the policies of the Coastal Act and facilitate coastal development permitting by allowing the local jurisdiction to issue coastal permits. The first two documents are the land use plan, which we know as the coastal area plan, and the local implementation plan, which we know as the coastal zoning ordinance. Both of these documents are adopted by the Board of Supervisors but ultimately need to be approved also by the coastal commission before they're effective. The land use plan includes the broad land use policies and goals for the coastal zone, while the zoning ordinance includes the more specific policies and standards for development in the coastal zone. And together, these two documents make up what's called the Local Coastal Program, or LCP for short. The changes we're proposing are only to the coastal zoning ordinance, we're not proposing any changes to our land use plan at this time. There's another type of document that's called a categorical exclusion order, or CATX for short. This document has regulatory authority that's equal to the documents in the LCP. It's also adopted by the Board of Supervisors and by the coastal commission, and it excludes certain categories of development from coastal development permit requirements. Those exclusions can be incorporated into our LCP, but they don't have to be, but they cannot be modified without amending the CATX. So if we've adopted the exclusions into our ordinance and then changed the ordinance language, that doesn't change the exclusions in the categorical exclusion order, we actually have to change that order to make any changes to the exclusions. Ventura County has one effective categorical exclusion order right now. It is very descriptively called E83-1, and it has an amendment, E83-1A. All right, the amendment process to change any of these documents is fairly extensive. We are at step one. We present these proposed amendments to your commission, and you make a recommendation to the Board. The amendments then go to the Board of Supervisors for their potential approval and then on to the coastal commission for certification, at which point the coastal commission can propose modifications or follow-up actions. Those actions then have to go back to the Board of Supervisors for them to accept the modifications or follow-up actions, and then the executive director of the coastal commission has to determine that the Board's action was legally adequate, and finally, the coastal commission has to concur with the executive director, and at that point, the amendments are finally effective. Now, if the coastal commission doesn't propose any modifications, you can skip those last three steps, but as you can see, it can be a very lengthy process. A little bit about our local coastal program history. Our first land use plan was effective in June of 1982, and then the next year, in October, our first ordinance was effective, except for the sections related to the harbor plan development zone and to our categorical exclusion order. So to address those issues, we worked for several years, and in May of 1986, the Board adopted a major recodification of our coastal zoning ordinance. Meanwhile, in September of that year, our categorical exclusion order became effective, and its amendment was effective in February of 1987. And finally, in December of 1987, the recodification of our coastal zoning ordinance was certified as effective, and we really haven't made any major changes since then. Coastal permitting works a little bit differently than permitting in the non-coastal zone. There are three basic categories of uses in the coastal zone. There are uses that are not considered development according to the definition that's in the Coastal Act. So those are things like pet animal keeping would not be considered development. Those don't require a coastal development permit because they're not development. Then there are uses that are development but that are exempt from coastal permit requirements either through a statutory exemption that's included in the Coastal Act itself or through one of our categorical exclusion orders. Again, no coastal development permit would be required for these uses because they are exempt, but a zoning clearance might be required from the county. So an example might be several different kinds of repair and maintenance activities are exempt from coastal development permit requirements but might require a zoning clearance. And then finally, there are uses that are development and do require a coastal permit. The main coastal permit in the coastal zone is called a coastal development permit, that's a discretionary permit. It's required for all development that's not exempt, but it's processed by the county, not the coastal commission. And there are three different types. There's a planned development permit, a conditional use permit, and a public works permit. So each of these permits also function as a coastal development permit in the coastal zone. We wouldn't process a separate permit. If we were processing a CUP, that would also function as that coastal development permit. We wouldn't do any kind of separate coastal permit processing. And most coastal development permits are appealable to the coastal commission even though they're processed by the county. There are some exceptions, they're fairly limited. All right, I'm going to go over just some of the key proposed amendments, and then if you have any questions about specific amendments at the end of the presentation, I'd be happy to answer those. Generally, the proposed amendments include wording and punctuation changes that don't have any effect on the ordinance meeting, so if there's a typo, misplaced punctuation mark, those sorts of things. We've also replaced some of the outdated or undefined terms with more current and more defined terms. We've done a lot of reorganization for clarity, and again, we're attempting always to streamline our permit processing process. And just generally to make some revisions to reflect current laws, some laws have changed since 1987. There clearly have been changes in technology and in coastal procedures. So this is an example of one of our amendments. We've added in this diagram that shows the different types of lot lines and some of the more unusual lot configurations and how you determine the lot lines for those lots, and this helps clarify the location of our front, side, and rear setbacks. We've also added in this diagram, which shows a clear-sight triangle. We've updated those clear-sight triangle requirements to be consistent with current engineering standards, and then added in this diagram so that you can visually see what a clear-sight triangle is. Right now, our ordinance has some regulations for satellite dish antennas that were really developed back when satellite dish antennas were big, bulky, eight-to-twelve-foot wide structures, and that's simply not the case anymore today. They're really more like this antenna in the picture, small, fairly innocuous. So we've gotten rid of those regulations, we just didn't feel that they were appropriate anymore. We have made a lot of changes to our use matrix. One of the first things we did was to remove those confusing little symbols and replace them with abbreviations that hopefully everyone can have a clearer understanding of permit requirements in that matrix. We've done some reorganization of the headings and the subheadings, and in case you don't remember what those abbreviations stand for, we've added a legend to the bottom of each page that the matrix appears on. And then we've added in permitting requirements that appear in other sections of our ordinance. So for example, our film permit requirements are currently listed in an entirely different section and are kind of hard to find because of that, so we've taken them out of that section and moved them into the matrix with all of our other permitting requirements. You are probably familiar with some of the challenges we've had with our height standards in the RB and RBH zone, so what we've done is simplify that language to just allow what we're calling a 28-foot box in those zones, which is consistent with our current policy. It's not a change to the allowable building envelope, and we're not proposing any changes to allowable roof structures in those zones. So right now, our ordinance allows you to have a 25-foot flat-roofed building on top of which you can have a deck, and you can have a three-foot tall solid parapet wall on top of that deck, so a total of 28 feet, which really isn't any different than a 28-foot flat-roofed building, so we've just simplified the language to clarify that either of those things may be allowed. One of the sections that we did a lot of amending to was the exemptions and the categorical exclusions. We didn't make any policy changes here, but we did try really to clarify this section to improve everyone's understanding of these exemptions and where they came from. The point of this is to ensure that the exemptions aren't incorrectly granted or withheld in the coastal zone. So one thing we did was we clarified the source of all the exemptions. Many of the exemptions appear in our ordinance right now, but it's unclear where they come from, so it's very hard to understand what are these exemptions and why are they there. What we've done is we've added in citations clearly stating where the exemptions are from, either the categorical exclusion order or statutory exemption in the Coastal Act, and we've cited the sections of the Coastal Act for those exemptions. We've also incorporated all of the exemptions that are included in the Coastal Act, so we have many of them in our ordinance today, but not all of them, and so we wanted to bring all of them in so the user doesn't have to go searching for the Coastal Act to understand the full scope of exemptions. And finally, we've taken the exact language from the Coastal Act and from our categorical exclusion orders, and we've brought them into the ordinance. Right now, the ordinance doesn't use the exact language from those sources, so that we've identified a couple minor errors in the ordinance language where things don't quite match up exactly with that language, and we've corrected those as part of the amendments. We have introduced a requirement for a zoning clearance for geotechnical and soils testing, which we define in the draft amendments. This brings the ordinance into compliance with the Coastal Act and just allows our division to review proposed work associated with that testing to ensure that sensitive habitats are properly protected as required by the Coastal Act. We've introduced a policy that's in the Coastal Act right now that allows for a waiver of public hearing for what's called a minor development, and that's a development that's consistent with our LCP, that only requires a planned development permit or a public works permit, and has no potential to adversely affect coastal resources or access. So for those types of developments, in the draft amendments, you can actually waive the public hearing process, which will shorten the time to process those permits and hopefully make it less costly as well. It's really just to streamline permit processing for some of the really innocuous developments in the coastal zone. We've also allowed concurrent entitlement applications for properties that have violations. So right now, in our ordinance, if you have a property with a violation and you'd like to process an entitlement to fix the violation as well as some other entitlements at the same time, that's not allowed. You have to first process the entitlement for the violation, and then after that, you can process any other entitlements, which isn't particularly efficient. So what we're proposing is a change to allow concurrent processing of all the entitlements for the property that you might be wanting to pursue, provided at least one of them abates the violation. And again, that just allows for more efficient processing of our land use permits. In terms of environmental review, this amendment is a project subject to CEQA, but it is exempt under the CEQA general rule, which states that CEQA only applies to projects that have the potential to cause a significant impact on the environment, and projects that cannot possibly have a significant impact on the environment are exempt under this rule. The amendments facilitate the correct application of the coastal regulations, bring them to today's standards, and help ensure protection of sensitive resources, so because of this, they don't have any potential to significantly impact the environment and are exempt from CEQA. In terms of public review, coastal amendments require a somewhat more substantial noticing process than non-coastal amendments. To do our noticing, we needed to publish a notice in the paper along with a summary of the proposed amendments. We also had to provide what are called review drafts of the ordinance, similar to the exhibits that you received six weeks before any board action on the amendments, and we had to provide them at libraries, at the coastal commission offices, and online. And we also mailed a notice to various state and local agencies as required by the coastal commission. We've received just one letter so far and some initial public comment on this amendment. First, that the public outreach on the amendment was inadequate. As I said, we did comply with all the noticing requirements, which are a bit more extensive in the coastal zone, and we do plan some broader outreach as part of future amendments that have more substantial policy changes. We were asked to clarify the uses that are exempt from coastal development permits in the body of the use matrix, and that's something that we agree would be helpful, and if you take a look at Exhibit 5 or Arata, we've actually provided an updated use matrix that does this. So for example, in the case of brush or vegetation removal, that requires a planned development permit, but we've added in a line, a subheading, that explains the exemption, has the section reference, and shows the permitting requirement with the exemption. And we've done that for every use that could have a potential exemption to coastal development permitting requirements, so that way someone doesn't have to go searching into the exemption section to understand the exemption permit requirements. We were also asked to provide regular training to our staff and to the public, as well as some kind of informational handout to summarize permit requirements, which was always something that we had planned to do. In fact, we've done a little bit of internal staff training already on some of these coastal issues, and we will produce some informational handouts and training if any amendments are Then we were asked to add an exhibit that includes the full coastal zoning ordinance with a table of contents, to help clarify the context of the amendments, to concede the entire ordinance and all of the strikeout underlying changes within the full document, which is a great idea, and we will definitely put that together for the board hearing. We didn't have time to do it for today, but that certainly is something that we think would be valuable as well. And I guess some people, you'll see that our use matrix is in color, but some folks with their printers are having trouble distinguishing between those colors when they print in black and white, so we're going to play around a little bit more with our color scheme and see if we can figure out something that's a little bit easier in both color and in black and white. In terms of recommendations, those are on the last page of the staff report. We recommend that your commission certify and review your consideration of this item and then adopt a resolution recommending that the Board find the amendments are exempt from CEQA, that they are in the interest of public health, safety, and welfare, that they're consistent with the general plan, our coastal area plan, and good zoning practice, that the Board adopt the amendments, and specify that the clerk of the Board be the custodian of the public record. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Before we have that, we need disclosures per our protocol. Do we have any disclosures of anybody even being involved with coastal?
No disclosures.
I have no disclosures.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
I don't have any disclosures, although I did research a legal section that might relate to one or more of the definitions, and I'll comment about that later.
Does he need to disclose that at this point? Because it's public record. I'm sorry. Can he counsel?
No need to. That's going to be part of any subsequent hearing or any questions that he might have. That's not something that's ex parte pertaining specifically to this item right now.
Thank you. I have no disclosures either, so thank you. Any questions of staff at this point?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Mr. President.
Mr. Chair today.
Vice Chair. I like vice.
You mentioned there was one categorical exclusion order. What is that?
What is the categorical exclusion order? It's just a separate document. It sort of has the same standing as an ordinance or an area plan, and it's specifically adopted to exclude certain types of development. So we have one. Other jurisdictions do the same thing. It's something that the Coastal Act allows local jurisdictions to adopt so that they can exclude developments from coastal development permit requirements. So that's not to say that a zoning clearance wouldn't be required from the county, but from the coastal commission's perspective, if it is an excluded development in a categorical exclusion order, there's no need for them to process a coastal development permit or see any kind of coastal development permit for that use.
So this exemption is sort of a broad thing, or do you do that? Do an exclusion for each development?
It's fairly specific. It covers things like small greenhouse.
I understand that, but is it tied to a specific development?
No, no. It's just general. It's just general.
All right. And so when this coastal zoning ordinance was finalized X amount of years ago, there were standards there, and then I keep seeing in the documents current standards. How does it go from past standards to current standards? How does that work?
Some examples, there's some procedures, say, in the government code that related to noticing that have been updated since 1987, so those are some standards that have changed. And the example of the clear-sight triangle, there were engineering standards that may have been accepted in 1987. Those have been updated since then, so we wanted to bring in those new standards to our ordinance. So those are the sorts of things we're talking about.
Who does the updating?
In terms of the engineering standards?
The current standards, if they've changed from old standards.
Those specifically come from a federal engineering document, the federal standards for site distance at intersections. It's the ASHTO, which is the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, I think is what it stands for.
So I guess technically, if a standard got updated, the coastal zoning ordinance probably should be updated, but that would be a problem.
Exactly, exactly. Those are the sort of standard updates we're looking to address.
Okay. That's all, yeah.
Commissioner Adukas?
We have a letter from COLAB. Have you had a chance to review that? It's dated June 20.
We have looked at that letter, and we spoke verbally about most of those comments a couple days ago, and I think we've addressed most of the issues in that letter. There are a lot of suggestions that we agreed would be helpful.
And I noticed that, but the ones that I didn't see in the presentation, and maybe they're in here, were the more specific ones. Let's see, it's in the one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, talking about crop production, fences and walls, brush or vegetation removal, et cetera.
Sure.
Those specific ones. What's planning's response to those points?
So the way that our ordinance is organized right now in the use matrix is that it indicates the exemptions for those uses, and it lists them as the permit required when those uses are exempt, and then it refers to another section to understand the basic permitting requirements. So what we've done is we've swapped that. We've put the basic permitting requirements into our use matrix, and then in response to this comment, we also added in those subheadings.
And that's the Arata?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So there's no change to permitting requirements. They're still the same, but what's different is just how we've organized the use matrix to try to clarify what the basic permitting requirements are and then what the exemption permitting requirements are.
Okay, thank you. Just one other thing, and maybe Commissioner Rodriguez will carry the ball on this, and it has to do with the 28-foot box. Yes, you'll carry the ball?
Sure, I'd love to carry the ball.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Yeah, thank you. It's a handoff.
Lateral.
But he put this in there? Yeah. Morning, Kate.
Hi.
Yeah, as it relates to the new height limitations, RB, RBH, and the 28-foot box, my understanding, recollection is we're bringing all this up to conforming because it used to be 25 and someplace else, somewhere along the line, we allowed parapet walls to be constructed that ultimately would bring the elevation a bit higher, and now we have basically a box. I think the last time we spoke about this was maybe about 18 months ago, two years ago. So in all roof-type structures or activities, then, would be within that height elevation of 28 feet. Is that correct?
There's some roof structures that don't have a height limit, so those don't need to be within the 28 feet. We haven't made that change, but generally, yes. So we had that at some point in history determined that a flat roof with a solid parapet wall is permitted up to 28 feet, and so this is just consistent with that determination.
The one clear exception was A-frame type structures that were allowed to peak at 30 feet.
Right, that's.
Yeah, and I don't have an issue with that. I guess the issue or questions come up, particularly in the beach residential areas, and the limitation on lot sizes is to go up. You can't go out, you go up, and consequently, structures that are being constructed have been constructed and can potentially continue to be constructed, creating clear obstructions to people around them that have been there a long time. And as I read the recommendations and the proposed changes, it appeared that exterior structure, for example, air conditioners, roof-mounted, would still, in essence, have to be within that 25-to-8, 28-foot height elevation, understanding that some may exceed it slightly because of their size. Is that correct?
Let me.
I mean theoretically, if I take it on its face, I can envision a box, a house with a flat roof at 28 feet, and then support structures, associated structures on top of that, i.e. an air conditioner, or a roof deck, for example.
Well, I think we distinguish between a roof deck and an air conditioner. So there's roof structures, so TV antennas, chimneys, those sorts of things. Those can exceed the 28-foot height limit. That's not, that's as the ordinance reads today, so that's not a change. The decks would, with their parapet walls, would need to be within that 28-foot limit.
So if there is a roof deck, the parapet wall has to be within that 28 feet?
Exactly. So we're not saying, okay, you can build a 28-foot home and, with a flat roof, and then on top of that, you can have a deck. We're saying everything needs to be within that 28-foot box.
Okay, no, I understand that. Okay. I think we've pretty well gotten where, I think our comments a couple of years ago wanted us, thought we ought to go. Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, I remember particularly a case where there was discussion whether or not something was a wall, or whether it was a window, and-
Well, yeah, in this case-
It was really creative, very creative architect.
Right. We've clarified that exterior walls also need to be within that 28-foot height limit, so I think that tries to get at that issue too. It's everything has to be within that 28-foot height limit, unless it's a roof structure that's specifically allowed to be higher than that limit.
The other thing that relates to heights was, I guess, starting point of, or, starting point at foundation. I think it was one foot, one foot above the middle grade of the street.
Right. There's kind of some complicated procedures for doing that measurement.
However, there is also something related to tideline or something along that line. I wasn't familiar with that.
And we haven't proposed any changes to how those base measurements are determined. And they are, yeah, they're sometimes related to the tideline, sometimes to the adjacent road, which has to do with just flooding potential in those neighborhoods. So we aren't proposing any changes to the way that we do those height measurements. We are simply proposing changes or clarifications to the height limits themselves.
Okay. Well, again, this was a major issue a couple of years ago when we heard, I think the topic was a residence was, that was being, construction was being appealed, pretty much almost at completion of construction as it related to height, and it had to do with the deprivation of ocean view-
Right.
-by oceanfront residents to adjacent houses across the street that were in violation of the code. And so that was the, I guess, the impetus for where we're at today. So, okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. I wasn't part of all that two years ago, so-
Oh, you missed the trigonometry and geometry part.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Oh, yeah.
So why was it necessary to raise it three feet? To accommodate these walls? Or why wouldn't that structure be 22 feet plus a three-foot wall in 25?
I think what was happening is-
Are we going to keep going higher here, or as time goes by?
There was this effort to call different elements of the architecture roof structures when maybe they were more appropriately actually part of the main structure. And I know it led to a lot of very detailed discussions over what is and isn't part of that main structure. And so rather than get into that level of confusion, what we felt was most appropriate was just, here's your 28-foot box, do what you'd like within it. That's what we would allow visually. You know, we would allow anything to happen in that box right now, because you can have a flat roof building with your three-foot solid parapet wall. So effectively, you could block out, if you wanted to have a really boring house with just a flat box, that entire box. And so it didn't seem to be particularly useful to have all of these discussions over, okay, well, within that box, is this particular feature allowed? Is it part of the main structure? Is it a roof structure? This just simplifies and eliminates the need to even go into that. You have your box, do within it what you would like, and then beyond that, there's limitations on what you can do in terms of only certain allowable roof structures.
So I guess what really happened is you realized you were allowing something that was 28 feet tall.
Right, right. That has been our policy for some time, so why not just say it clearly in our ordinance?
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, one more comment, Paul. Commissioner, I guess, the other, on that specific point, I think it was pushed or argued by whomever the presenter was a couple of years ago, that with that type, with that 25-foot height elevation and mounting roof structures, i.e. air conditioners or something akin to that, that it became an appearance issue, a side issue, that wasn't particularly attractive. And so it was, they were allowed to put up parapet wall, if you will, to shield it, shield the structure from that type of view. So I think that's kind of where we've come to. I just came back from Daly City, and it's a world of flat structure, rope houses, just, you know, and you wonder, but apparently it works when you have zero, zero property line structures. Not that this is zero property line, but it just, that's the way they build them in some parts to this day.
Any other questions? Okay, just to add to that, I'm glad you addressed the average mean level, but not only for the cook. So once that's established, then the 28-foot box matters.
Exactly.
Okay, got it. All right. Then the second thing, just Paul, part of the other issue is because you're dealing with a lot of grandfathered lots. So for somebody to have an air conditioning unit, I remember specifically, there was no access walkway, and they were minimal as it was. So I'm trying to remember specifically, it was only like two and a half feet between that property line and the other person's door. So now what do we do, kind of thing? So it's more of an accommodation, given those particular areas, when they make these kind of changes, rather than people digging down into the sand and creating other issues. So thank you for addressing it. I want you to deal with a hypothetical later, because we do have a speaker.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, because I want you to do the land use exhibit two, and here's the hypothetical. I have an existing caretaker dwelling, a mobile home.
Okay.
I'm going to want to expand it from a double, single Y to a triple Y, which means I have to expand the pad. Now, I want to complement, because on a page, I knew I was going to, okay, page 20 of exhibit two, and again, it says improvement to structures other than single-family dwellings or public work facilities. And it says, go see improvements. So what I like is, I'm getting references to where I should go. So my question to you is, I come to the counter, I want to expand my caretaker dwelling from single Y to a triple Y, and come back and walk me through the permitting process that the person would now get at the counter.
Okay.
And it doesn't have to be exact, okay? But what I'm trying to complement, you know, is taking from confusing to now I can follow a path, simply so. But I think that would be very interesting to go through to see how this affects, you know, an individual property, okay?
Okay.
Is that clear enough on the direction?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there's no further questions of staff, I will open the public hearing at this time. If anybody is parked in the three-hour zone, please understand at 11:00 they will be ticketing you, so if you need to remove your vehicle, please do so. Yes?
Before staff, please.
Sure.
I had, well, I've got a half dozen things to talk about, but two specifically related to staff.
Well, can we take the, or take the one speaker?
If staff will remain, then that's fine.
Yeah, we'll take the one speaker and allow her. Open the public hearing. We have, there's no cards in favor of it, so we'll move right on to the opposed recommended action. Ms. Lynn Jensen, and we do have a copy of her letter, Lynn?
I won't read the letter.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lynn Jensen. I'm with Ventura County COLAB, the Coalition of Labor, Agriculture, and Business, and we are at 1672 Donlin Street in Ventura. I just want to make a general comment about agriculture, that agriculture is a business, and it's a lifestyle for many family farmers. It is not a view shed, it's not a pastime, and it's not to be taken for granted, and we are really concerned with it facing being regulated out of business. And I'm going to try very hard to communicate to you our concerns today with these kinds of changes to zoning ordinance. First of all, I apologize for my letter being so late. There's so many things going on that are impacting farming. One of them was the Water Works manual that, the deadline was Friday. So I did communicate with Katie Matchit on Monday, and I ended up getting the categorical exclusion documents, which I had never seen. I don't know if you had ever seen them, but apparently they weren't on the website or anywhere to be located. And I think those are really important when we're looking at this ordinance, that we make sure that if we're going to get the language of the categorical exclusion in the document, that it's in there and that it's accurate and correct. We think that this is kind of premature in terms of this coastal zoning update to be brought to your commission for approval, because there hasn't been any public review or outreach. You can see there's nobody here, and that's partly because nobody really knew that it was happening. There's no trace of the update on the website. The only way that you could find out about it is if you're on the email list for the Planning Commission, you happen to go in and click on it and figure out that this was happening today, which is what I did last week. And I'm wondering, you know, who was notified? I know that the only notification you really have to do is in the star, but there is some things, like the Bed and Breakfast, there is a policy change with respect to their business, and I'm pretty sure that there's nobody that knows about that, that owns these Bed and Breakfasts that have been notified. And then when I started looking at the documents on the, in the staff report, I just realized that the documents themselves are so incomplete. It was impossible really for me to review. Maybe you guys are better at it, but in my past life, I actually did this for a living. And it was difficult for me to understand exhibits two and three, because they're piecemeal. They aren't full documents. When we looked at the ISAG, when we looked at the Water Works manual, you get the entire manual, not just the things that are changed, so that you can reference things. So I was looking for the definition for agriculture yesterday, and I couldn't find it. And it turns out that it wasn't changed, so therefore it wasn't in the document. And that was really an important key for me to be looking at this document, was when you refer to things of agriculture this and agriculture that, I needed to know what the definition was, and I had to go back online and try to figure all that out. And I do appreciate the discussion that I had with Katie, and I appreciate her sending me the documents over. But I really think that this needs to step back and take a complete review. I'd like to really have our board and our members, we have 300 members, most of them farmers and ranchers out there, to have a chance to look at this before it goes any farther. I think that it's being incorrectly characterized as minor policy changes and corrections to clerical errors, while there are some activities that are extremely important to our industry and those of us who live out there in the coastal open space and coastal ag zoning, particularly the things that are being changed from zone clearance to a PD permit in the matrix. And I do agree with Katie that it's better, but I didn't have a chance to look at the errata this morning, so it really hasn't been reviewed. The other thing that was missing in the documentation was just a table of contents. It turns out that the section numbers are not in numerical order anymore. So if you want to, even on the matrix that was shown to you, it has a number on it as the section number, but the sections aren't in alphabetical, aren't in numerical order. So where, how do you find them? And I just think it just makes it very difficult for the public to go through here. We recommend that you give the public a chance to review the ordinance with an eye on that categorical exclusion document, because there's some pretty specific words in there, and its intent, and how that translates over to the document that you're changing, the coastal zoning ordinance. One of the things I'm really concerned about is the brush clearance here. And it talks about the exemption, grading excavation or fill which does not involve 50 cubic yards or more of material, and brush or vegetation removal other than major vegetation of less than one-half acre of land. I'm not sure I understand what that's saying, but I don't see any cumulative in the zoning ordinance, coastal zoning ordinance, it says that that half acre is cumulative, and I don't see that in this exemption in categorical exclusion document. I think we ought to really take a look at that. We need to figure out what the intent of was that document in 1983, and the perspective of those who will be subjected to this ordinance, again, farmers, ranchers, and people who live out there in the open space and the ag areas. One of the things just in general that we see is that there's a lack of advocacy for agriculture within the county agencies, even though we make a huge contribution to the economy and the lifestyle here. The advocate used to be the agricultural planner position that was in the ag commissioner's office. And I would think that in the past, that agricultural planner would actually look at this and see if there was any impact to agriculture before it was put out. That planner position is now being turned into another regulator, another person who's going to be inspecting ag for pesticides or whatever. And we think that that's a tragedy. At the very least, perhaps the document should go through APAC, but just to get that agricultural perspective, because all these things, when you add them all up, the cost of water and the cost now of PD permits, you know, how much can agriculture sustain in this community? The last thing I want to say is just part of the letter, that ordinances need to be written carefully, and they need to be understandable to the general public who are being regulated. I know that Katie made this, on one of her slides, she was talking about how we were recommending that there was training and such, and that was not a recommendation of mine. I strongly disagree with the notion that an appropriate remedy for a poorly-written ordinance is all these supplemental guides and all this training that needs to happen. I think the ordinance itself needs to be clear, and it needs to be something that a person who is having a problem, just like you said, they want to increase their, the size of something, they know how much it's going to cost, how much time it's going to take, and what the process is. And what we hear every single day is people come to the counter, and they don't just stop at planning, they start at planning, and then they end up at environmental health, and then they end up in building and safety, and they have no idea when they start this process, how much it's going to cost and how much time it's going to take. And, you know, that's just the system that we have. And I think these ordinances, when we revise them, we need to keep that in mind. And I, again, I think that we need to have the opportunity to review it in a manner that's more user-friendly before we decide to pass it on and have the board supervisors decide whether they're going to approve it. And honestly, we just don't think that it's ready to do that. So, thank you very much.
Any questions of the speaker? Ms. Dukas?
Thank you very much for your comments. Already, you've made it better, so with the suggestions about the exclusions and stuff. Is your, is your major problem with this, though, that you have not had time to review it?
I think the public needs time, and all of the stakeholders that are going to be subject to this need to have some time to look at it. Yeah, I'd like to see, you know, the Cattlemen's Association and some of these other organizations take a look at this and see how it's going to impact them. I mean, I only had really a day, and I'm looking at this categorical exclusion order, something I've never seen. And I think that that's something that we need to really look at and make sure that this ordinance is consistent with what the intent of that was. And I'm not sure that that's what's happened, because there, in the planning division, there is a great advocacy for, there's a, there's a full-time biologist, and that biologist's position is advocating for every stand of sagebrush in the county, which is great, we need that. But we also need a balance on that to say, okay, well, how's that going to impact? How's that going to impact a guy who needs to clear brush for fire? Are all those people going to be able to clear brush for fire with a half acre without doing a PD permit? Is that reasonable? And I think that's the problem, is that we want to try to conserve things, but there's no balance here. There's no balanced way. If there was a planner in the, in the planning department that was dedicated to either the businesses out there and/or agriculture, then it would make sense, because they get into the room together and they'd be negotiating these things, and they'd be talking about these things, and they'd be saying, okay, well, we want to protect the sagebrush, but we also need to make sure that everybody who's doing agriculture can do the fire things they need, and they're able to plant maybe a little bit more here and there, the things that we need to do to make sure that agriculture continues in this county. So that's, that's all I'm saying. I'm not trying to slow the process down or make it more difficult.
No, but I do hear some distrust from you, and I just want you to know that four of us read it, and I don't find any substantive changes at all.
Okay.
The ones that were arguably substantive have been questioned, the big, huge, honkin' radar, you know, microwave dishes, and the most substantive change, I think, is the 25, 28-foot box. All these other things are, it's almost like they're re-iterations of what already are. And whether or not those need to be changed, I think, is a different question. But, but my reading is, and I want to assure you, my reading is, at this, at this stage, that, that the revisions are truly inconsequential.
Okay. The concern that I have, just let me make, point out one thing that happened while we were negotiating the initial study guidelines, is that there was language that was put into the guidelines from the general plan. And as we were going through the negotiation, that language was changed from what the general plan actually said to what was in the guidelines. And we had it rechanged and revised back so that it said exactly- And we had it rechanged and revised back so that it said exactly what was in the general plan. So there's a lot of interpretation that goes on. And I just think that we need the public or some amount of time to make sure that whatever is in this categorical exemption or exclusion order is actually the true language that's in there with nothing left out and with, you know, nothing changed around. And I apologize if that's the, you know, if you think that's unreasonable, but I really believe that there needs to be a check.
And don't misinterpret what I'm saying and try to create something out of nothing. We read your letter, and I commend you for the work that you're doing to make this a better document, with the end use in mind that it's going to be more predictable cost and time, you know, to get things done in the county. Thanks so much.
Anything else, Ms. Jennings?
No, thank you.
Thank you for appearing. We appreciate it. The reason I say that is, in all the years I've been involved, we do these kind of things, and this is usually the turnout, regardless of the notification issue. And so then, two years from now, something comes before us, and everybody says, well, how did this happen? Like you, the vigilance is the necessity for that input. So we have, but again, thank you very much. I appreciate you being here. All right. Seeing no other speakers, having no other speaker cards. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, because I don't think there's going to be anybody commenting on it, and have staff come back, because I know Commissioner Rodriguez had additional questions. So as far as the little hypothetical I gave you, Katie, we'll hold that based on some of the other questions of the commissioners, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Thanks. I have a question, since we're talking about typos and stuff. On page 27, Exhibit Two, second paragraph top of page, is that a typo where it says Sol Romar, South Coast Community?
No, that's actually the name. There was a typo before, but this is the correct name of the community.
Okay. The second thing is, on page 49, Exhibit, excuse me, page 50 of Exhibit Two, Section 8171-144, Standards for Determining Fair Housing and Reasonable Accommodations, et cetera. Under A, it says, "The applicant seeking the accommodations is a qualified individual protected under the Acts, ACTS Acts." I guess I don't know what that means. And for clarity, should it say protected under ADA, American Disabilities Act?
That's a good suggestion, and yes, you can clarify that reference.
Okay. There was also a, I guess this is, a couple of comments here as it relates to potential problems or enforcement issues under the code. On Exhibit Two, page 68, Article Five, Section 8175.5.I, parentheses J, talked about exterior storage of materials, open storage of materials, specifically exterior storage. Number four talks about materials stored may include, but not limited to, inoperative vehicles, equipment, building materials, scrap metal, or personal household items. The reason I raise that issue is abandoned refrigerators are both, I guess, a nuisance, but also there are safety issues. Does that section, in essence, cover that potential problem?
I think it could. One thing that we do anticipate as part of future amendments is taking a look at these standards and maybe doing some clarification, being more precise in terms of our exterior storage requirement. So perhaps a good idea would be to call that out explicitly if that's an issue so that it's very clear. I think it would probably fall under the category of household items, but might be useful to include maybe appliances or something towards that end.
Aren't there, I'm trying to remember, I know in Los Angeles, there is a specific prohibition. You have to, if you have a refrigerator outside, the door has to be off.
Right, and I understand that, and I agree with you. But I've seen outside storage of refrigerators or abandoned refrigerators. In one particular case, it's storage because it's covered over with a tarp to keep it out of the weather, but the door is attached. And so that was my question, whether this particular section, or if you would, review this particular subsection to see if, one, if it's applicable, and, two, that it's enforceable.
Okay.
I have a question on number, let me see. Exhibit Two, page 65, Section 8175-4.3, balconies, fire escapes, and stairwells. How does that impact illegally constructed or non-permitted constructed structures as relates to balconies or staircases? Does this update grandfather those residences in? Or, and I'm thinking of at least two locations I'm aware of where letters were sent out. And in one particular case, nothing has happened. And this goes back several years. So I just want to make sure this isn't a situation where this update clarification grandfathered anything in.
That's not the intent with relation to this particular language, no, not to make some kind of policy change grandfathering something in.
Okay. Just two more things.
Okay.
And it has to do with definitions. Exhibit Two, Article Two, Page Six, inoperative vehicle. It states, "A vehicle that is not fully capable of movement under its own power or is not licensed or registered to operate legally or on a public right of way." I understand that, but from an enforcement perspective, whether it's code enforcement or law enforcement perspective, there's no definition of what inoperative means, other than the fact it might be rusted into the pavement, but otherwise appear to be operative. The county has, I think it still has, a 72-hour abandoned vehicle or unattended vehicle ordinance that's usually used by public safety. But the consensus out there now is that if it's moved, the odometer shows at least one mile of movement, then it's not considered abandoned between, you know, 72-hour spurts or whatever it might be. I believe the City of Thousand Oaks has a specific city ordinance that addresses this, I'm told. I'd like staff to look at that or research that and consider it and see if either this could be, this particular section could be edited to make for more clarity, or if not, if it's not applicable, then it's not applicable.
Okay.
I believe the City of Thousand Oaks only has the 72-hour notice and something having to do with recreational vehicles. And there's guidelines on how much lead time you can have before you take a trip and how much time you have to clean up after your vehicle, after your trip. And so it could be on the streets a longer period of time.
Yeah. I think the City of Oxford has something very similar. But my primary concern is the definition of inoperative, and I don't know if this, I assume the city ordinance has that in there.
Okay.
If you would look at that.
Uh huh.
And.
You said one more.
Yeah, I said one more.
But we'll allow you more if you have it written.
One more, as it relates to the matrix, on Exhibit Two, page 22, retail trade, under coastal commercial. And it refers to definitions, I mean, and it talked about, and so I went back to, uh, oh, I'm lost. Back to definitions, as they define retail trade. Oh, here it is. Exhibit Two, page nine, retail trade. And my concern, or I guess my concern or comments relate to that definition, specifically gift shops. I've been approached in the last six months by half a dozen people concerned about what appears to be the upcoming opening of a retail operation defined as a gift shop, and the concern about the product that they will provide there, in a general definition, considered drug paraphernalia, head shop, if you will, that would come under that definition, gift shop. And I would like to know, and I've shared this with county council, I referenced, I did some research on that to see if there's something that might be applicable, under Section 11014.5 of the Health and Safety Code, drug paraphernalia. I'd like to find out if there's any way to put something into that particular definition that would either require compliance with that section or, and not specifically prohibit the sale of inventory potentially related to that, but require some sort of compliance so that there isn't any violation there. Otherwise, we're in an enforcement issue if it becomes a problem that, again, falls on the residents to make the complaints, to create the investigation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. With some sort of enforceability there, I think code enforcement would have a clearer understanding of what is not allowed versus the general description of something under gift shop.
Right.
I will share this with staff and.
Put it into.
You would research it, staff would research it before it goes to the board and see if there's any way to get some tightening on that definition. I would appreciate that.
Well, if we go too far much further, if you would allow me, Commissioner, I would like a brief comment because of county council. When we write an ordinance, then there is some type of applicable code, state code. For us to try and reference every state code, and particularly in the coastal, when we do have certain federal, what kind of direction would you give staff along that? Thoughts on your comments when it goes to the board? Because again, we could sit here all day and micromanage that.
Through the chair, well, to the chair and to the rest of the commission. Question of applicability of other state laws. And we know that there are many laws, and you can't reference every single one of them in the zoning ordinance. And I believe, and I direct this to the planning staff, there may be provisions within your code that talk about general compliance with other applicable federal, state, and local laws. That is a standard, kind of catch-all, omnibus provision that's usually found in these type of codes. And I don't think that lack of a particular citation would mean non-applicability. I think the real question here is clarity and notice to all parties of what might apply. And so that would really be the issue, not whether or not these other laws don't apply just because they're not specifically cited within the zoning ordinance. So my direction to staff would be really, how substantive is this change? Is it really going to change the project? Because now we're at a position where we're asking you to recommend X to the board supervisors for their final consideration. How much change can go on right now without possibly creating a situation of having to renotice because the project has changed so significantly? And so I think this is within the bounds of what is already being proposed to you. So that would really be my analysis and my direction to staff. I don't have anything at this point in time because I haven't heard back substantively. How does that ripple through the document?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Rodriguez, to the chair, we just wanted to remind you that, as Katie has alluded to, we do have future phases of this project. So changes that you may want us to look at for inclusion in those future phases is something that if we can't include it in the change going forward to the board at this time, we could include it in a future phase.
Thank you. That's perfectly satisfactory. And I think we would address a lot of the issues that some residents have voiced about that particular issue. And then it just becomes a research issue on the part of enforcement to become familiar with the potential violation and then respond to complaints or conduct inspections, I suppose, as they might see fit. Thank you.
Can I follow up on that? Are you talking specifically about having head shops or, I don't even know what to call those, retail trade businesses, that they were, that they would have like an extra layer of, they have to be 500 feet from a school or something like that, or?
No, no, not at all. Coincidentally, the particular location I'm referencing is approximately to, I'll say 300 feet from a regularly scheduled bus stop. So, but I didn't raise that issue and haven't raised that issue. No, not, not.
So you want to call out head shops as being not allowed as a retail trade in the matrix?
No, I'm not calling out head shops. I'm just concerned about the potential violations that could occur in a retail operation under the umbrella of gift shop as it relates to, you know, to paraphernalia, drug paraphernalia, if you will.
Well, I think we've given staff and county council direction, and I'm not going to speak for county council, that it becomes a problem when you start invading rights. But at the same time, the enforcement issue, I agree with you. So that's why we pay county council all that money. Big bucks. Okay. Any other questions, staff? My hypothetical.
Right.
Are you ready?
Well, I can give you at least the initial take. So, as you said, a caretaker unit, we would look at the exemption for improvements to residential structures other than single-family dwellings. And that's in Section 8174, 6.2.3, which is on page 28 of Exhibit Two. Section B explains what is part of a residential structure. What Section C does, and this is the critical step that we would have to take, someone initially came asking about permitting requirements for this use, is C lists all the exceptions to the exemptions. And there are many. One of them is any improvement to a structure which changes the intensity or use of the structure. And so initially, my take would be that expanding it to double the size or triple the size might be a change in intensity of the structure. It may also meet some of these other exceptions to the exemptions. So in that case, we would default to just the basic permitting requirements, which is a planned development permit. Under the proposed amendments, you could follow the waiver of public hearing process for minor developments. So there wouldn't necessarily need to be a public hearing, provided that all of the criteria for a minor development are met, no adverse effects to coastal resources, it's consistent with the LCP, and it requires a planned development permit. So you could at least streamline the processing that way, but probably wouldn't be totally exempt. So that's that particular case.
So that's under this proposed, that I proposed what we're looking at today?
Right, right.
If we were to use the previous, then we'd have to have the public hearing, et cetera?
Right, right. I believe the permitting requirements are the same in both ordinances, but this procedure for the waiver of the public hearing is not in our ordinance today.
Okay. So this basically would streamline that process to an individual like me would say, okay, it goes from 900 square feet to 1,800 square feet, obviously additional concrete, yada, in the coastal zone. But at the counter, the initial reaction would to be a PD without a public hearing, based on certain representations?
Right. And there is a noticing procedure that you need to follow if you're going to waive that public hearing. It's not to say that you It's not to say that you get away with not doing any noticing or anything like that, but you just don't have to come to the planning director and hold an official, formal public hearing.
Which goes back to what I heard from Ms. Jensen, is this going to be more efficient as far as planning and permitting and timing? And that's kind of the feel I was trying to get for, for some of these changes. Thank you. Commissioner Dukas?
Piggybacking on this intriguing hypothetical, who determines a change in intensity? Because I would argue that if a caretaker took, you know, got married and had kids, that, that intensity of the use really hasn't changed at all.
So no expansion, but they had kids.
Well, that, that, you know, whether, whether he was a caretaker who, who didn't have kids to having three kids necessitating, you know.
Sure.
Who determines that change in intensity and how is that defined? Is there some kind of threshold that, that says, oop, that's intense, or no, that's not intense?
I think in this case, it's we're expanding the building footprint, pad, actions like that speak to change in intensity.
So would five square feet be a change in, of intensity? Or would fifty, I mean, what's the threshold?
I don't know that we have a precise threshold. Do you have any suggestions on that?
We, we don't have an exact threshold, it's intensity in the land use. You know, we're only looking at the impacts to the land. So obviously, you know, if he had, if he was just building onto an existing single-family home and he wasn't, he wasn't creating a new horse corral and a, and a new pad and outing a, you know, an outbuilding, you know, so there's some reasonableness applied to it, but we don't have a threshold applied to it.
Again, I brought this hypothetical because these are the things that somebody encounters at the meeting with you the first time. To the applicant, it appears to be fairly simple and straightforward. Next thing they know, they're paying for a $15,000 hearing at the coastal commission. And that's what I'm trying to get a feel for by the changes here, that we get to that point. And some of the frustrations I've heard from Ms. Jensen and others, to be perfectly honest with you, is this going to streamline, or now do we have another layer kind of issue? And again, I accept the fact, this is, we're just starting the process after 25 years. So there's a lot of catch-up and a lot of innuendos, and does the health and safety code come into effect? Does the vehicle code come into effect, those kind of things? And so, nice first stab is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you.
Would it be, would it be helpful to have some kind of threshold? Or reasonableness sounds, sounds good to me, but, um, you know, in this change of, is it, is it better to have the discretion and the leeway to decide whether or not something's intense on a case-by-case basis? Or what's the best way to deal with that?
We could look at that issue further in the phase-two part of it, but it is, it's, you know, all of the codes, including ours, you know, on page two of the code, it talks about interpretations and ambiguities, because you cannot write a code, right, that addresses everything. And you can't write a code that doesn't have subsequent documents to explain it, right? Your code would be thousands and thousands of pages long. So always, almost on every page one or page two, it talks about interpretations, it talks about ambiguities. And then we do adopt things like guidelines that the board adopts to talk about thresholds, because everything cannot be in the code. So I, I just had a meeting a couple of days ago where there was a policy that was full of shalls instead of shoulds. And when you do that, it really ties your hands case by case. So, you know, there has to be a balance, there's hardly ever a bright line, you know. If you, if you fill the code full of absolutes, then absolutes is all you're going to be able to look at instead of the circumstance of each individual case. So, I mean, there is a balance there, and it is a difficult one for you. But if you want to instruct me to look at that issue or look at it as a part of a subsequent phase when we're doing the, the larger and broader outreach, we'd be happy to do that.
I think looking at the intensity issue, because again, that becomes a judgment call, particularly for those of you at the counter. All right, which way should I take this? You know, should it be just an exemption? Should I neg deck, or should I full-blown environmental impact report? Unfortunately, you get to make those kind of calls, so visiting what is an intensity, what isn't. And the only thing I'd take back is I remember in the late 90s, the discussion of allowing farmers to have, be able to sell their produce in the roadside stand. But then the accommodation is how much of their square foot could be allocated to the standard commercial products that people expect, Coca-Cola or something of that nature. So we got down to that minutia, that no more than 25%, yada, 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 yada. So the point, again, the judgment calls that are going to get made at the counter, and I think it's part of what I'm hearing from Ms. Jensen and the others. So again, to help you as you go through the process, to visit what is intensity and what are those thresholds. And I'm not looking for a bright line, just to have those discussions.
Sure, definitely.
Any further questions of staff at this time? Hearing none, then what is the pleasure of the commission regarding the recommendation to the board?
I'd move to recommend staff action.
I have a recommend staff action, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion on?
Chair, Chair Westner, can I have one clarification? Are you recommending staff recommendations as written or with the clarifications in the additional research that Commissioner Rodriguez requested?
Are my suggestions going to derail the timeline on this?
No, I don't believe that they would. But do you want us to take that to the board? Not, not exactly what we've written, but the, the additions that Commissioner Rodriguez had?
Comments from staff indicated that, that those issues that I've raised could easily be taken up in a phase-two or stage-two. And if that's the case, then, then that's more than appropriate, and I would not amend staff's recommendation.
And I'll just add to that, some of the conversations, like the hypothetical I gave you. It's a question of intensity and analysis and things like that. I'm not going to put it into the motion, but understanding that's the real day-to-day that applicants are going to have to live with. So the staff would have, particularly when you present it to the board, that these were the things we discussed. All right, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Don't hearing none, and Mr. Anstott is not here to vote. Motion carries, we want to thank staff. I'm going to try it, Ms. Machet. Did I get close enough? Machet, Machet. I don't want to call you Katie, but it's going to come easier. All right, again, thank you to staff and everybody for their input on the, moving on to, Ms. Rodriguez, do you have something to say?
I was just going to say, Katie, thanks, that was a very smooth presentation for a very dry subject.
Nice job. Question, the policy still stands if we compliment the planner, they have to buy donuts, the staff?
That works for me.
Absolutely.
Bad policy.
Okay, moving on to item number nine, discussion, nine A, report by the planning director on board actions and other matters.
Okay, well, let me just take a look at the board calendar. So, so two things that are going on for them, on June 26th, they're going to hear a pre-screening of a privately initiated text amendment on a, for Agarman. And they are doing a, or they're proposing to do a composting facility in AE zone land on land that's classified as important farmland inventory, IFI. So if that pre-screening passes the board, then that project, that, that text amendment and the CUP that will accompany with it will be back before your planning commission, before it goes back to the board. So that's just a, a policy look for the board, that's on June 26th, so it's on their Tuesday agenda. On July 24th, they will be hearing the appeal of your commission's decision for the public hearing on Mr. Mosler. So that decision was appealed by Stop the Trucks, and that is going to the board on July 24th. There was no new information presented with the appeal, so it will be more of a, of a rehashing of, of what your commission has been doing. That is going to be on July 24th. The item that we had on your planning commission agenda for June 28th has been postponed to a date uncertain, but hopefully that will be scheduled in July. And I was taking a look at your calendars, I think we have attendance for you all for July or part of July.
I'm not available on the 19th, that's, that's your meeting.
Yes, we have that. So we'll schedule that meeting as soon as we, as we can. And as far as I know right now, that's the only thing on the tentative agenda for the.
So June 28th, we don't have a hearing after?
No, June 28th, that won't be heard on the 28th. We are once again trying to resolve that issue with the operator, and if that can't be done, we'll be back on the, sometime in early July. On a little bit of good news to hopefully reduce the, the size of your packets, we did put in our budget this year that we were going to get iPads, and we talked about that before. The board operates with those, so, you know, we're expecting it to be a cost savings all of the time that is put into copying and mailing and FedExing all of these large packets of paper.
And paper cuts.
Pardon me?
And paper cuts.
And paper, yes, and paper cuts. So that will be done, we will be ordering them in July, and so there'll be a, a series of training that we do. One of the training is going to be operating these computers that are in front of you. We're going to operate them the same as the board, the minutes will be taken in them directly, the votes will be up on the screen. So your agenda and your packets will be on this, and your agendas and your packets will also be on your iPads that you'll be able to download from your home computers. And there's a, a program on there that you'll be able to circle things and flag things, and, you know, so there'll be some training on that. And hopefully that will also streamline a little bit of the process about the mailing and the, and the copying that Rochelle has to do. So has everybody met Rochelle, so she was hired here at the county a couple of weeks ago. Very happy to have her on board, and she is going to be then the staff to your planning commission. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Unless you have anything for me.
Item B, items from the planning commission may introduce.
Does the, does the county have standards about 500 feet away from, from a bus stop? Or, you know, to protect the, the public health and safety with regard to head shops?
The county doesn't have standards, right? So whether the, whether the state has standards or not, so we, you know, under a gift shop or frankly even under a 7-Eleven, I mean, they sell all sorts of, you know, paraphernalia. So it's a, it's a little bit of a slippery slope to go down, but we're happy to, you know, to look at it. And that's a good section, you know, so we'll, we'll consult with county council and see if that section is appropriate to, to be, you know, to be incorporated in there. We don't have separate standards, though.
I have just one thing, reading upon it, it's resurfaced itself. Caltrans 118 and 134 Lewis Road intersection, the city of Moore Park is planning to object to. I do know Judge Walsh ruled a number of years ago that Caltrans had to provide an EIR. So the status of what's happening with that, you know, if you can just cut, when it, it becomes significant. The reason I raise this is the city of Moore Park approved a project at the west end of town which had, in my opinion, significant impact on traffic. And now the city of Moore Park is complaining that Caltrans has not properly analyzed the truck traffic that they've approved. So I just don't want to see the county get sideways in all this, because I remember the last time when we tried to improve that intersection, which then wound up in litigation. That we're, I know we got noticed about the expansion of the traffic in Moore Park, and at that time, basically, the county said, we're not going to say anything, but I know that we're under a court order as far as that intersection and the impact and the environmental impact report. So just food for thought, but just know I'm going to be paying attention to that one, because I got a strong feeling there's a lot of non-communication by some of the parties or misunderstanding by the people at city staff in Moore Park, that they take actions that then in turn impact that intersection. And so it's just if we could follow that, whatever communications, other than what I would see in the newspaper.
By way of follow that, are you asking me to provide your commission a report on what is happening with that, or the county's position on that?
But right now, just an update, because again, I know it's, it's not like it's going to be an instantaneous thing, but it's just the fact that there is a standing superior court order that has an impact on what is done. And then number two, actions taken by municipality having an affect further down the road in the circulation element. So against one, again, we're getting into who's on first and are they communicating? And so, yeah, I'm just going to follow simply because I get to drive through that intersection. Pretty much now that all the cases have been transferred to this court on a fairly regular basis. So I, just again, it's the action one party takes, another party takes, and then we got a court ordering something. Are all these things being taken into consideration? Or do we get to an 11th hour and somebody goes, whoops, what about this? Kind of thing, so. And then Caltrans once again says, okay, fine, we won't do anything for another 10 years. All right, all right, anything, yes.
Just one last question, Kim, as it relates to the iPads. So RMA will provide training and whatever support is needed for those, for the maintenance of those iPads?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And I assume there'll be restrictions on that, so that proper use of government property?
That is also correct, they do belong to the government.
Big brother's still watching.
I've got a question.
Sure.
More out of curiosity, anything? I've noticed that with CUPs, if they've expired, other than the applicant having to update where there's codes, changes in signage and viewshed and all those kinds of things, there doesn't seem to be any penalty if they pass their date when it becomes expired. Is there actually a penalty for that, or that's just?
If, if their CUP has expired and the county has issued a notice of violation, when they come in to renew their CUP application, they have to pay double the fees. I believe it's up to $1,000 maximum, so maybe there's a $1,000 penalty. So, you know, we're, we're really trying to do a lot of outreach on CUP expiration dates. So in the staff report, in the conditions, in the code, it all says, it's the responsibility, this is a contract between you and the county, and it's your responsibility to, to keep your contract updated. Right, that's, that's what it says. But we are doing outreach, and we have been, I want to say for about a year and a half, where we've put a system in place where I think it's every quarter or every six months, we send out a, a letter to saying your CUP is about to expire. And we do have someone on staff that, that tries to research and keep on top of that. But a lot of the CUP expiration cases come to us by way of the code compliance section, right? They were out there researching a complaint by somebody else and have discovered that their permit has expired. So, you know, there's not, there's not much of a penalty, because we're really interested more in compliance than penalties, but there is a penalty in the fee schedule that the board has adopted to double the fees, I think up to $1,000.
So then the county notifying folks that their CUP is about to expire is not 100% kind of thing? It's kind of catch, it's catch can.
Because it's a.
I mean, they're still responsible, I understand that, too.
Right, and the, the, the code makes the applicant responsible. It's not 100% because you have a website and a database that's been built over 40 years. And, and that question, you know, if it wasn't entered at the time in 1977, when somebody approved a 30-year permit, if they didn't enter that date, right, it didn't catch up in the database system. So now the database system that we have is rather elaborate, and all sorts of dates are kept, and all sorts of reports can be run. So the more information that we know, the better we're going to be able to serve our customers by saying, you need to get in front of this issue. So it's definitely one that we're building upon.
Approximately how many CUPs do we have?
You know, I don't know, but, but I'll find out.
Just curious.
It's, you know, we have, well, you know, they're, they're in the, they were in the 5,000 number, you know, from beginning to end on all permits at one time. But there's a distinction between the active CUPs, and as I said, since the database is so sketchy on when permits actually expired, since that question wasn't asked and entered, it's hard to say how many CUPs are active right now. That's why everyone requires, you know, now that we, the code says that we should look at every permit no less than once every three years. So now that we try to do that cycle, we, we have a better understanding of ones that are expiring and ones that need, but we don't have a holistic picture on every single permit. But I'm hoping within the next year or two, after we go through these three-year cycles, we'll be able to get a real clear picture.
Thanks.
And not all CUPs expire, that's, that's another, you know, planned development, but CUPs, CUPs do, planned development permits don't, that's a distinction also.
Anything else to do with the order? Hearing none, I'll adjourn this meeting in honor of Rochelle. Thank you for being aboard. Take care.